I'd like to call the meeting to order in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, PL 1975, Chapter 231. Adequate notice of this regular meeting of the Board of Adjustment of the Township of Franklin has been provided. Board members, applicant professionals, members of the public, please speak directly into microphones so that our recording secretary can properly process minutes. Applicants and professionals, please fill out the sheet on the table when you've completed your testimony. Thank you, and we will move to the roll call.
Okay. Joel Reese, Alan Rich, Faraz Khan, and Michael Doherty all asked to be excused this evening. Cheryl Bethia?
Here.
Richard Prokanic?
Here.
Gary Rosenthal?
Here.
Robert Shepherd?
Here.
Basim Verdas?
Here.
Basaliki Anastasakos?
Here.
Chairman Thomas?
Here. Minutes of the regular meeting, January 19th. We need a motion.
I'll move.
I'll second.
Cheryl Bethia?
Yes.
Gary Rosenthal?
Yes.
Robert Shepherd?
Yes.
Basim Verdas?
Yes.
Basaliki Anastasakos?
Yes.
Chairman Thomas?
Yes. Resolution for Sharonda Copeland, ZVA 220023.
I'll move.
I'll second.
Cheryl Bethia?
Yes.
Richard Prokanic?
Yes.
Gary Rosenthal?
Yes.
Basim Verdas?
Yes.
Chairman Thomas?
Yes. Hearings, Jim and Jam Construction, ZVA 210022. Minor subdivision with C and D variances in which the applicant requests dividing the property into two lots and build a single-family home at 27 Williams Street, Somerset, block 66, lots 2 and 3 in the R-10 zone, carried to May 18th. And notification will be needed again. It doesn't appear that there will be too many people here for that, but re-notifying. Tonight's hearing, Dollar Tree Stores, ZVA 220025. C variance in which the applicant seeks to install signage, 4437 Route 27, Kingston, block 5.02, lot 117.03, in the neighborhood business zone. Everybody come up to the table if you're here for that, and we'll get started.
You can have a seat at the table. Who's representing, an attorney or ... okay. So you can call your professionals up one at a time, and they can come to the table and sit, and whoever you're going to have first, that kind of thing.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Bridget Sykes. I'm an attorney with Fox Rothschild, and I represent the applicant, Dollar Tree Stores, Inc. The application tonight is for three different sign variances. The property is in the neighborhood business zone. I have my first witness tonight will be Kevin Dixon, a professional planner and traffic engineer. He could come up.
You could raise ... good evening, if you could raise your right hand. You swear the testimony ...
Can I use your mic, sir?
You swear the testimony about the give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Mr. Dixon, could you give a brief recitation of your credentials?
Yeah, sure. I received a Bachelor of Science in Civil Engineering from the University of Pittsburgh in 1978. I was a practicing highway and traffic engineer in the city of Pittsburgh for the county of Allegheny, in which Pittsburgh is the county seat, for several years. I started this business in Dixon Associates Engineers. I am the owner and managing member of Dixon Associates in 1984. Our firm specializes in site civil design, land planning, and traffic engineering, as well as municipal engineering.
And you're here as an expert in traffic?
And in land planning.
And you're licensed in New Jersey?
I am licensed as a professional engineer in New Jersey, as a licensed professional planner in New Jersey since 1986, and I am certified as a professional traffic operations engineer, PTOE, from the Institute of Transportation.
Okay, that's fine. We'll accept you. One quick question. Is your firm the one responsible for all those green bike lanes in the city of Pittsburgh, which I love?
No, sir. They came after I was long gone, but ...
That would have been a pretty good reference.
I'm a big cycling advocate myself, too.
Okay. Go ahead.
Thank you. Mr. Dixon, can you confirm that you've been to the property and the surrounding area and are familiar with its current conditions?
I have, yes, and I am.
Can you describe the geographical area and the existing development?
Yes, it's on a county roadway, and it is a shopping center of a significant age, if I might state it in those terms. The area is ... contains a strip center in what I'm going to call the back of the site. The building is about 345 feet off the roadway, Route 27, and the roadway is a 50 mile per hour, two-lane roadway. The project site, the site in question, is surrounded by substantial amount of vegetation, trees. There's a wall of trees, in fact, if you're in the northbound lane of Route 27, that essentially shields your view of the complex, of the center. The subject of this application is the anchor of that building, which is a 15,000-square-foot unit with a large gable face facing Route 27, but also with a bank building directly in front of this portion of the center, such that as you are traveling north or south, for that matter, if you're in front of the site facing into the shopping center, this unit in question is virtually invisible to you. It's being blocked. I would also characterize the site as being ... having a good stand of deciduous vegetation, trees, throughout the site. And even with the leaves off the trees, the vegetation obscures the view of that gable face, of that wall, on the shopping center, and that when the leaves are on the trees, it's virtually blocked from almost every angle along the road. As you enter the site through the main entrance near the center of the site, you begin to see the signs across the building, and then the anchor portion of the center off to the left where the gable face, the gable wall is, where the signage was previously mounted for Retro Fitness. And that is the subject location of where Dollar Tree would like to place their sign and logo to identify their occupancy of that space.
So you described the facade where the unit is located as having a gable. Does any other portion of the facade of the strip center have a gable?
No, it's more or less a parapet or a mansard-style roof over top of the overhang where the sidewalk entering the various stores are located. And so there is a fascia board or a fascia presentation along that area that sticks out in front of an awning style, or, as I said, like a parapet roof over top of that shelter over the sidewalk. That is basically the sign area for those stores. It's the only area available on those units. And then they are interior units, for the most part. And so they're really ... there's no other architectural features associated with those interior units where you would place any additional signage.
What ... I'm sorry. What do you ... why do you call them interior units? Don't they have a door coming out of the front of the building?
They're interior to the ends of the building. They're inside the building, as opposed to being on the ends. They're not ... it's a term of art. There's end caps or anchors in a center, and then the units that are inside ...
In other words, it's not ... Dollar Tree will form one of the end caps, and then there's a store all the way at the other end that will form the other end cap, and all the stores in between are interior.
Correct. Thank you for allowing me to clarify that. If it wasn't clear, I apologize. But the difference there would be, on the ends, there's a corner and another face of the building, and oftentimes that becomes a candidate for signage. It's not in this case, but yeah, that's why it's referred to as that.
So with respect to our unit, there's substantially more facade area to place a sign compared to the rest of the center?
It's a larger space, too, and larger both in square footage than other units, but also in its architectural presentation with that large gable wall on the front facade of the building.
Can you describe the proposed signage and the dimensions?
Yeah, if I might, please allow me to go to the board and just read them off.
Just bring your microphone.
And I'll just say, this is included in the application package, is, I believe, the second or third page.
I suppose we're going to refer to this as A1.
Oh, definitely.
Is that correct?
That's fine. I mean, as long ... it was part of the application package, but that's fine. For purposes of the discussion, we can mark it as A1.
Okay. Thank you, sir. So what we're looking at here is the sign manufacturer's catalog, basically, of the signed dimensions. And what we have is a sign that is ... consists of basically three elements. One is the word dollar, the other is the word tree. That is considered to be about 130 square feet, 131.45 square feet, to be exact. And then on top of that is the logo, that is the trademark for Dollar Tree, and that is a four-feet diameter circle, if you will, of 12.25 square feet. So that the sign, of course, requires relief from your ordinance. It exceeds the allowable square footage of 30 square feet. It also exceeds the number of signs per tenant in the neighborhood business district, whereas one sign is permitted, and the interpretation thus far has been that this really constitutes two signs, the verbiage and the trademark on top of it. So the request, then, before this board is that the relief to allow the Dollar Tree Store to have the ... basically, it's typical sign for all of its stores, and this is the standard sign for their stores.
I have to tell you that I have never seen the logo on any Dollar Tree store. Not that I go around picking pictures of them, but I've never seen that. This is the first time I've seen that logo.
So I think we have a manufacturer's representative here, so I'll allow them to comment on that, if you'd like now, or ...
No, we'll give him his turn.
Okay.
Now, here's another question I have for you. There was a Retro Fitness store in there before.
Yes.
And they had a rather large sign as well.
Yes, they did.
Is your sign, the verbal part of the sign, is that bigger or smaller than the Retro Fitness sign?
So I'm going to work off of the visuals that we have in terms of the recorded pictures. I'm going to say it's slightly larger than the Retro Fitness sign in terms of length. I would say it's very comparable in terms of height, because the Retro Fitness sign wasn't exactly as rectilinear as the Dollar Tree is.
No.
It was a little more ...
Scripty.
Yes, thank you.
I have a question with regards to the size. Is that okay to ask now?
Sure.
Okay. So can I ask how many Dollar Tree Stores are in Somerset County, or in New Jersey, rather?
I'm going to need ...
We would need our ...
Dollar Tree representative.
One of our other ...
Okay.
We can get to that.
Okay. So is this the first Dollar Tree store that you designed, that you are responsible for with regards to the sign?
I think probably in terms of the brand names, yes. I have, of course, provided planning guidance on many signs in the past for various commercial and retail ...
But for Dollar Tree, you've done other stores for the same owner, Dollar Tree?
Not for Dollar Tree.
Oh, I see. Because my question is, how do you determine the size? Is this a standard, the logo and the total square footage, which says here, is really 100 square feet, if not more, larger than what's allowable, right?
Correct.
How is it determined? Is that a standard size? In other words, no matter which Dollar Tree store you go to throughout the state, you're always going to have other stores that have exactly the same size? And my follow-up ...
Excuse me. I'm not sure if that's your ...
Okay. Per view, no. Our next witness will address that for you.
Okay. I would just ... maybe your responsibility is then, do you take into consideration the size of the shopping center?
I do. Thank you for that question specifically. I think I would be able to address the board and hopefully provide a little bit of perspective on establishing the size of the sign with, from a planning perspective, not necessarily from the corporate perspective. But from the planning perspective, I would sort of combine elements of your code to help illustrate the difference between a building that meets the setback of 20 feet in the neighborhood business district with a 30-square-foot sign on it versus a building that is 350 feet back from the roadway with a 30-square-foot sign. That sign would not be visible. I can speak to that as a planner, but also as a traffic engineer. And what I would say is that if you're looking at the angle of your view of looking at something that is 20 feet off the property line and 30 square feet, and I'm going to just use a number here, it could be any number, 30 square feet, but let's say it's 3 by 10. If it was three feet high at 20 feet, it would need to be 50 feet high at 350 feet to have the same angle of view that you would have. And you wouldn't ... of course, that's not something you would ever propose. Size of the sign then grows as the distance of the building from the street increases, because visibility becomes a matter of convenience and safety, because convenience and efficiency really translate to safety. Confusion and inconvenience translates to an unsafe condition. And I can tell you that a 30-square-foot sign, 350 foot off the roadway, would not be visible. It would not be readable. It wouldn't even be recognizable. And to your point as to the standard sign arrangement that we have tonight, yes, it is a standard sign arrangement. And one of the reasons that it is set up like this with a certain script, a certain size, and a certain orientation is that it is immediately recognizable. So signs have a way of becoming recognizable at a glance. And that is a good thing, because especially on this particular site where the vegetation now has matured and has grown in, and it's a very attractive amount of tree cover in the parking lot, but it also shields the visibility of the signs on the building. So the motorist going by is getting just a very brief glance. And a motorist can take their eye off the road for one or two seconds, okay? Now, you should never take your eye off the road, but you can get away with one or two seconds without, you know, losing your perspective and losing track of where you are on the roadway and your situational awareness as a motorist. So you're going to get a glance at that sign, but you're not going to get more than a second or two. And from that distance, this size was determined to be sufficient to be seen from that distance. And as I say, it's not only reading the word Dollar, the words Dollar Tree, but it's also seeing the shape and size and color of that sign, because it's an image or a trademark in and of itself. And so it's recognizable, like the golden arches. Not as recognizable as the golden arches, but as everyone knows, when they see that, they know exactly what they're looking at. The typical example.
So along that line, I wanted to go through the sign regulations, the purpose and intent. So can you give your professional opinion as to whether the signage that's proposed is consistent with the purpose and intent of the sign regulations for the township? I'll go through. This is Section 112-106 of the ordinance. The first is to promote signs that are orderly, readable, and appropriate to the activity to which they pertain.
Yes, I mean, of course, we are advertising an on ... this is an onsite advertising sign. So again, as it is, Dollar Tree's retail store is recognizable for its consistency throughout all of its stores, and then the sign will then convey that message.
Compatible with the surroundings?
It is. And I would point out that the Pennsylvania Dutch Farmer's Market sign is 143 square feet, and that is right next door.
So it's consistent in scale with the neighboring ...
It is. It is. And it's on a much larger wall, and I think it actually creates a sense of scale on the gable face of that building that is much more balanced than the Farmer's Market sign. Nothing against that sign, and nothing against the market, certainly, but they're great. But the ... just in terms of comparison of the view shed or the viewscape that is created by comparing those two signs, this is a much more balanced architectural sign.
Expressive of the identity of the proprietor?
Yes. Branding, yes.
Complimentary to the character of the community?
And I think, yes, of course. It's a retail store, and it's ... it's a welcome in most communities. I believe it will be welcome here as well.
And probably most importantly, non-distracting to motorists so as not to contribute to traffic accidents.
Yes, and that's a very important point, because that works both ways. In a traffic situation, if a sign is too small, if it is, if you're looking off to the side to be able to see where you are, mistakes can be made. And so there is a safety factor involved in having a message that is readable from the street. And the best example of that is that when we get on the highway and we're on a high-speed roadway, the signs are huge on the interstate highway. And the reason for that is they want you to see them a long way away. They want you to be able to see what they are right away, just by glancing at them, and they want you to have the message so that you can get back to looking at the roadway, because you're traveling at 60, 70, and on the Atlantic City Expressway, 80 miles an hour, everybody. So the signs are very large for that purpose. And in that regard, it is not only is it not a distraction from the roadway, but I think it creates a convenience and a safety factor in the roadway.
In your opinion, do the variances support any of the purposes of zoning under the Municipal Land Use Law?
I do. And in the vein of safety, if I could just mention those, I'm going to ... I'll read them from the Municipal Land Use Act, but in purpose G, "to provide sufficient space in appropriate locations for a variety of agricultural, residential, recreational, commercial, and industrial uses in open space, both public and private, according to their respective environmental requirements, in order to meet the needs of all New Jersey citizens." And I think we can talk about this commercial development being properly situated in an appropriate location, and a proper identification of that goes hand in hand with its location. Purpose H, "to encourage the location and design of transportation routes, which will promote the free flow of traffic while discouraging location of such facilities and routes which will result in congestion or blight." And there's a couple of ways to look at this purpose. One is adequate identification signage facilitates the adaptive reuse of this space that is no longer occupied, and that would certainly prevent it from being built on a freestanding site on virgin ground that would be disturbed and possibly be a disturbance of the ground. But if it's located, and it's located on a state highway, so it is certainly supported by proper identification in this location. And finally, purpose I is to promote a desirable visual environment through creative development techniques and good civic design and arrangement. As I said, I believe it represents good civic design and a desirable visual environment to have a balanced sign, one that is not obtrusive or intrusive to the view shed along the highway or even on the site, and one that is balanced and in proportion to the sign very next door, the store next door to it. So I think it contributes to a desirable visual environment in that manner.
In your professional opinion, would the granting of the variances be detrimental to either the zoning ordinance or the surrounding properties?
No, and for the reasons that I stated before, I think the C2 criteria would be met by the benefit of this sign providing convenience and safety. And I would even go so far as to say the architectural balance of that building facade has the benefits and with no discernible detriment, in my opinion. So we would meet that criteria. But also, it would certainly not be an impairment of the intent and purpose of the zone plan or the zoning ordinance, because it, for all the aforementioned reasons, really a combination of things.
In your professional experience, you've also represented municipalities as a professional planner?
I have. I was the board planner for the zoning board and the planning board in the town of Hamilton for 15 years. Planning board planner for city of Lynnwood, Township of Galway, many years. So I have provided those services to various boards throughout the years. And I would point out that when I was the zoning board planner for the town of Hamilton, several years ago, Planet Fitness came into a shopping center that was occupying a super-fresh grocery store that had been, the super-fresh moved out. And they came in with a sign that was larger than the ordinance permitted, and I actually wrote a report that was very similar to what I'm testifying to tonight. I believed that then, I still believe it. As a highway engineer, a traffic engineer, and as a planner, appropriate sizing of the sign is a benefit to both the town as well as the motoring public.
So in conclusion, in your opinion, do the benefits of the development and the signage outweigh any detriments?
They do.
In your opinion, should the variances be granted based off of the testimony that you've given?
Yes, and I want to add, just, I think we didn't necessarily touch on substantial detriment to the public good. And I see none. We are not imposing an egregious visual blight upon the building. We're not imposing a glaring or a blaring sign of any kind. There's no moving or flashing lights.
Is the sign lit up?
Sign is lit. It's lit only just before the open and just after the close of the store, which is 9 to 9. It is backlit, and then it will go off at half an hour after the store closes.
Okay, so it's illuminated from the morning until 9:30?
That's correct.
Okay, all right.
That's correct. And again ...
Oh, sorry.
Okay.
Our sign.
Okay, I'll only let him ... this is the information I was working from. I apologize if that's not accurate, please.
Oh, wait. He'll give his turn.
Yeah, I'm sorry about that. It sounds like I'm going to get a ...
Is the sign blinking?
No, it is not.
It ...
It will not blink. It will not flash. There is no LED or electronic message of any kind, changing message of any kind. And the LED, there's no LED changing colors or anything like that.
That's all I have for Mr. Dixon, if there are any other questions from the board. That's all I have for Mr. Dixon, if there are any other questions from the board before we bring.
Anything from the board?
I have a couple of questions. The one thing you really didn't talk about at all, and, and I don't know what kind of a sign this is. What would you call that kind of a sign? Is that a pillar sign out in front of the building?
It's, it's different terms, but a monument sign, a marquee sign?
Monument sign, I'll go with that, I like that. But now, you never mentioned the fact that there's a monument sign in front of this property, did you?
Not.
And why is that?
Because the sign that is being proposed by Dollar Tree to be placed on the monument sign is replacing the sign that was already there for Retro Fitness in the exact same location, the exact same size.
Right, but it would seem to me that if you have a sign on the, if you have a sign on this monument, all of the reasons that you gave for having the extremely large sign on the side of the building go away because people riding up and down the road are gonna see that monument sign. And there's, there's really no reason for Dollar Store to have this enormous sign on their building. And it just seems also, the way that you explained the presence of all the vegetation in that parking lot, again, it makes it, when you were done talking about all the vegetation and how you can't see the sign, it, it sort of makes it seem like it's, there's really no need for the sign there. So, so I'm just not comfortable with the arguments that you've made to support this sign being somehow a matter of safety or a matter of convenience in view of the sign that's gonna be on the, the monument sign.
May I address that?
Sure.
Was that a form of a question? Okay, yeah, so.
Can I ask you something, I may have a follow-up question. So they're proposing a sign of a hundred and thirty square feet. Why was that, why was that size chosen as opposed to a hundred square feet, sixty square feet, thirty square feet? What's the reason for that particular size? Does that, Bob, would that, does that add to your question?
Yeah, that adds, that adds to it, I believe so. It's a good question in itself.
Well, I would like to address the question that you asked, and maybe we can bring the sign guy up to, to, to address the question specifically about the size. But there's a reason why I did not bring up the monument sign, because I'm not a fan of those signs. And here's why. You're going fifty miles an hour down the road, and you are looking at twelve, fifteen different establishments on signs that in your, in your eye, look about this big from fifty feet away as you're going fifty miles an hour. I've never been a fan of those. I don't think that they, they contribute to the safety of the motoring public. And I realize that they're everywhere and that everybody wants them. But when you're going fifty miles an hour, you can't, you can't go down the list of, of stores to see what stores you're looking for there. Now, I will say that I think Dollar Tree is a nice green sign up there. They're gonna put a, a placard up there. And in some respects, that certainly serves as that visual thing that I spoke about earlier. But you're still talking about something that is relatively small and tiny on the marquee sign that most of us, when we are looking for something on those signs, cannot see what we're looking for as we're going fifty miles an hour. And that, that street is posted at fifty. That's, that's the reason I didn't talk about it because it was not, it was not a contributory, a contributory sign, in my opinion, towards the benefits of having the larger sign on the building.
Okay. Now, maybe you could answer, Roxy, no, it'll be the next guy that will answer Mark's question.
I, I'm sorry, if I may, I have a question with regards to the public good or detriment. Have you referred to that, right? You're the right person to ask that question? I'm new here, so I just want to make sure. You mentioned that you visited the site?
I did.
Right. In addition to, would you call it a large shopping center or a relatively small?
Well, in my experience, it would, it would be what I would call is probably a medium-sized shopping center because it has about twelve units in it. It's a couple hundred feet long and it's, so it's, and it's got probably three hundred parking spaces. So somebody else might call that large, but we, we work in all relative terms. We've worked on some much larger shopping centers.
Okay. Did you notice the surrounding area around the business? We are talking about the public good.
Yes.
You know, I, you mentioned that you visited. Could you tell us what you noticed around the, like, what are the other structures?
Offices across from it, there's some, a lot of residential development nearby.
Okay.
And that's, that's the character.
That's what I saw too, yes, there's at least two developments. It seems like there is a religious institution across the street rather than a corporate center?
Did not notice that.
So, so my question is, is the public, the residential, the people who live in those residences, how are they benefiting from the larger sign?
Well, they, they.
I understand the people who are driving.
That's a very good question because detriment to the public good is, starts with the immediately surrounding neighbors. And so where we go to that detriment, we're talking about a sign that would, is not intrusive and is three hundred and fifty feet away from the edge of the property. So it would be very small within the, within the view of those, of those people. So in that regard, the benefit then comes in from, basically, it's more of an expanded benefit. The benefit is that it is more easily identified from, from the road, from the parking lot as you're pulling in. Certainly, if you live across the street and you know intimately what the shops are in that street, you may not, after, after your first visit, you may not recognize the sign necessarily to be a benefit. But the benefit expands beyond that, and it certainly is no detriment.
And, and how would you, and this is my last question. How do you describe, how would you describe the, the overall community surrounding this property? Is it highly commercialized or is it more of like a, a, a quiet? Because we're talking about Kingston, I've lived in Somerset County for twenty years. Would you say it's a more like rustic, quiet kind of neighborhood? Or is it a overly commercialized type of area?
It's a state highway, Route twenty-seven. So it's, you know, that, those areas are the areas that your master plan encourages growth and development and, and support of existing commercial development. I would characterize as a very nice town, first of all, a beautiful town. And that is, this neighborhood node, if you will, is, is surrounded by a residential zone. So I would call it residential in character with some commercial with a state highway running through it. And that's, that's, that's about, on balance, how I would characterize the area.
Thank you.
I must be looking at the wrong picture then because when I look at this, I, I have utmost empathy for residential dwellings. But I can't see how, you know, and we have a different discussion whether this sign is appropriate or not. But I can't see from this picture how it absolutely is any way possible to affect, that, that that sign will affect a residence.
I, I don't believe it will either.
Right, and aside from the fact that we might be getting a little, a little away from the discussion, shopping centers is a permitted use. We're not talking about the use, we're talking about a variance on a sign, which we have at this board, probably one sign variance a month on average over a year because of the way our ordinances are constructed. Instead of just trying to write signs for every possible building, make you come in here and prove if you need a certain size, you need to prove it. Just as we did with the twelve-story hotel two weeks ago. Some people would say, why give any variances? But a sign that met the ordinance requirements on that building would never be seen by anybody. I think that's what we need to be focused on, the impact variance in this situation would have on, one, the master plan, whether it's needed, whether you've established, you know, the, the benefits and the detriments in our mind. I, I, I don't want to waste time with the board. Somebody tell me how this is gonna affect any residents. It's, it's.
I don't believe it will, sir.
Maybe, this is, a lot of this open land is probably not even developable land. No sewers in this area.
It's not developed yet.
Maybe we need to, you know, focus on a variance not always being bad, but necessary. And if it's not necessary, then we won't know. Alright, go on.
Mr. Chairman, perhaps we could get back to the question that was asked a few minutes ago about why this particular size as opposed to, why not two hundred square feet? Why not a hundred square, why a hundred thirty-one square feet and then go from there?
That's good, that's appropriate.
We are going to have our sign, our sign person. We are an expert on signage, so.
Not an expert.
Can you raise your right hand?
Yes.
Can you swear the testimony about to give?
Okay, swear a minute, though.
The testimony about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do. My name is Nick Capatos. I'm the owner of Sign Pros. I've been in business for thirty-two years. I've done work for Dollar Tree and Family Dollar for fifteen years. I've come in front of the boards many times. I sit on a planning board, so I'm, I'm well aware of the criterias and things like that. So I'd like to at least address a few things for the board just to try to help everyone out. So to the question about why do we do what we do for signage? Really, it's, in my opinion, our goal is to do things that are proportional. The ordinance, you're correct. If the ordinance was, was written a little differently, we wouldn't be in front of the board right now. But the ordinance right now limits the size of the signs. It doesn't take into consideration a larger piece of property. So when you have a larger piece of property, your ordinance caps it at thirty square feet. So even though we're fifteen thousand square feet, which is, you know, five or six times larger than all the other signs, all the other properties, we would be allowed six times thirty, a hundred and eighty square feet if we were six individual stores. So this is one big store. So when we're, when we're designing a sign, especially for a large national chain, is they have a branding that is very important to them that we have to match. This is the new branding that they're using with the circle on top. My opinion is the circle is not a, is not a separate sign because it's integral to the, to the sign. It's, it's no different than the dot on an I. As you can see, it's their logo, the one in the middle with a tree around it, so it's part of it. You are correct that sometimes it is horizontal and, and different. But what we are trying to accomplish here is you've got this large facade that the builder built. I'm assuming at some point when there was an anchor in here, he wanted to make it look appropriate. So what we've done is we've got a forty-two inch sign that, that fits this area, which is seventy-two inches, to give it a negative space top and bottom. So the size of the sign in, in just general terms is proportional, that's our goal. So as for the, the size, Dollar General does give us criteria. They, they try very hard to have a certain size building with a certain size sign that matches their, their needs. So in this particular case, this fifteen thousand square foot sign, their goal is to have this size sign, that's why we're here with this size. If this building was half the size, we'd be probably asking for half the size of the sign. As for illumination, the reason I interrupted and I apologize for that was because to save electricity, we don't have the sign running during the daytime when the sun is out. So either with a timer or a photo cell, it turns on at, at, at the, in the evening and then turns off because their criteria is that they don't want their employees, the sign will be on for a brief period of time, a half hour, for the employees to leave. I've been in front of, in front of a few other meetings, so I, I remember that. The color green is a very subdued color. So the, the argument about the fact that it is so far from the road, you know, you're, you're, you know, that light is not gonna shine across the street and things like that. So the green is much more subdued than a red or a white and stuff like that. So I think it looks proportional, I think it's, it, it fits the, the shape. You know, they're redoing the stucco out there, so it's all gonna look really nice and, and, and part of the, part of the shopping center. And that gets back to the question of why is a sign allowed? You're right, it's, it's in your master plan. This is a, a commercial shopping center, signs are permitted in it. So there is no, no detriment because you're allowed to have signs in there. The question becomes, is this sign appropriate for this, for this piece of property? And my professional opinion, that's why I made this drawing for you guys. I wanted you to see that I think it looks proportional and fits the size of the building. I cannot attest to safety, I don't have initials at the end of my name, I don't have a P E on the end of mine. So I can't say about safety and issues like that. But as a, a practical person, a sign has to look correct. If it doesn't look correct, that's the reason I'm in front of these boards all the time because a lot of times the ordinances do not reflect what is needed for these, for these, these different properties. The zoning board would have nothing to do if the council were to change the ordinance. But, you know, currently the ordinance is thirty square feet, so we have to be here in front of you. But did you have any more questions? I hope I tried to answer that a little bit. So the size, and also when you're manufacturing, we do try to do things in increments. So the next size down wouldn't be a substantial drop from this size because Dollar Tree does not look for smaller, they, they have some smaller footprints out there, they're trying to get away from them. So this is more to their, their liking for this kind of property.
You've been to the site, sir?
I was there before I came here, yes.
So, so something you had just said about if that store, if that area was chopped up into individual little stores, probably like the rest of the shopping center, it could be up to six stores.
I, I only said that very quickly. I don't know that.
Well, because it, well, it might be important testimony because, I mean, it might be, again, it might be persuasive. And I'm just trying to make sure that it's accurate.
Okay.
So are you basing it on kind of where the columns are and that in between those columns?
So we've got eighty-three feet is, is the frontage of the store. Your ordinance allows for thirty square feet, but I don't have it memorized. Does anyone remember, is it a max, is it?
Thirty's the max.
Thirty's the max. So if it's a, is it two square feet for every linear foot of frontage?
No, it's, it's pretty much just a straight thirty percent, yeah.
It's per tenant. So, you know, you do have, so you are, so that's, you're right, I did one, two, three, four, five, six. So I did look at it as if it was six stores. I don't know the shopping center well. I do have a copy of the pylon sign, and the pylon sign does currently have fifteen spaces on it. And some of them are small. We didn't ask for approval for it because it's permitted to change the plastic in here. So I can submit this if you guys want to look at this.
I think we have it.
It's within the packet.
It's in the packet. So I, I, I can't testify to the exact how wide every store is. But a typical store would be anywhere from, from eighteen to twenty-five square feet. So, you know, I could be off a little bit. If I were to say five, five times thirty would be a hundred and fifty square feet. We're asking for a hundred and forty-two. But once again, I think the issue that was trying to be brought up was the, the size of this facade. Everybody else only has this small sign band because of the way the Mansard roof is. And their signs fill it up a hundred percent, which I personally don't like. I think there should be negative space top and bottom. But they filled it up to make the letters as big as possible and to maximize their, their thirty square feet.
And then in terms of the design, I think this was addressed before, but, so that's not gonna be within a sign box? It's gonna be each letter is gonna be separate?
Yep, these are called individual channel letters. They're internally illuminated, it's a piece of plastic with green vinyl on it. LED lights inside, which are energy efficient. And it's an aluminum box, it's mounted directly to the, the facade. All the wiring is behind it, and it'll be controlled with a timer that turns it on and off.
Okay, and then from your perspective as a, a sign person, is there a reason why, why do typically anchor stores have larger signs than the interior stores?
Because they pay more rent, but, you know, it's fifteen thousand square feet. And I, I believe that it's just a proportional issue, once again, it's the size of the store, the anchor store. In a shopping center, anywhere, it's the larger building, it's the larger sign. You know, Dollar Tree, that's their new footprint. We're doing much larger stores because they're, they're successful. And, you know, you know, they're the anchor, so that's why it's there. So when we're designing a sign, just so everyone knows, we're really dealing with the area that we have and what the ordinance allows. And the only reason we ask for variances is because the area sometime, you know, is much larger than what the ordinance allows. But I believe that the councils and committees do this because they, they want to have some control on how big the signs are gonna be. So hopefully the board feels, and I would, you know, that this, let's look like it fits the area. And once again, testifying back to the Retro Fitness, even though we weren't able to get the permit from the original sign, it's pretty obvious if you look at the, the stucco line. from the original sign, it's pretty obvious, if you look at the, the stucco lines, that there, that there's six feet between those stucco lines. And if you look at the photo that was submitted, that, that retrofitness is between five and six feet high right now at the circle part of it. So I believe the board or someone approved at a, at a point, they thought that it did fill that area appropriately and gave it division, though it did get real skinny at the end. We're a little longer and shorter than.
I don't know, there's a question for you or somebody else, did Gracie Barra Jujitsu self-defense, is that separate use from, is that still there?
That's over there, yes.
That's a separate use?
Yeah, and I believe they have.
It wasn't part of retrofitness, it's a separate?
A separate facility, and I believe they have two signs. If I looked at it, there were two signs.
We were there tonight, yes.
We were there tonight, and I think they had two signs, because I think you're right, they might have gotten approval to put a second sign up there. Talk about that.
Board of any more questions for this gentleman?
I actually have a question for you, Mark. So why is the logo considered two signs?
You know, it's, it's really, it's, it kind of goes either way. I, I, I think it's either, I would kind of consider it one sign myself, but then if it's one sign, then the vertical dimension variance then is 7.5 feet. So it's either one sign of 7.5 feet or two signs. I, I don't know, it's kind of six of one, half dozen of the other, really. And then it all adds up to that 131 anyway.
A lot of ordinances, they, they draw a, the smallest square around everything, and that's how you, you figure out the square footage. But I agree, it could be perceived as a too high if we.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, I think it visually presents as one sign.
Yes.
Can I just ask one question?
Sure.
I think you touched on this a second ago. Why do the anchors have larger signs?
You know, if you've been in a shopping center, you just see that when they built the building, this 15,000-square-foot union is the only unit that got an A-frame. And I believe the idea is that that's going to bring everybody in to go to the pizza place and go to the other ones. Not a marketing expert, I, I, I just do signs, but I will tell you that, you know, they're, they're always the bigger signs, the, the supermarkets and things like that. The difficulty you have, though, nowadays is because a lot of the stores are getting much smaller, what do you do with these big facades and things like that? So at, at least the, the Dollar Tree is taking over the entire property without having to.
But you're, you're, I guess, alluding to that these anchors are more of a destination for the shopping.
At one time, I think they were.
And then these smaller businesses kind of feed off of the?
In my experience, there's a pizza place in every, you know, I'm, I'm Greek and Italian, so there's a pizza place and a restaurant in every shopping center because they're drawn, you know, to the, to the larger ones.
Thank you.
I don't know the history of the shopping center that well.
I do have, I have another question related to the size. So is it mainly the justification, is that it aesthetically fits better in that space? Because the argument about beneficial from a safety standpoint, I don't know if you can answer that question.
I can. He, he's the professional when it comes to safety, but.
Well, can I, can I point out one point, though, that, I'll read from the ordinance. So section 112-113 of your ordinance sets forth the design standards. So the design standard says that every sign shall be in good scale and proportion in design and visual relationship to structures, buildings, and surroundings. So from being at the property, seeing the design of the property with this one gable and the where the signage is placed along with all of the other units, from a sign perspective, someone who designed signs for facades, would you say that this is in good proportion to this particular unit relative to how the entire structure was designed and where signage generally would have to be placed for any other unit?
Yes, and it is the aesthetics, exactly. It's all about making it work on the, on the property. If it was small, you couldn't see it, and I would agree 110 percent, that even though you're driving down the road, you still look to your left and right. I mean, I'm in the sign business. I sell pylon signs, which I, or monuments and pylon signs, and I sell wall signs. Go anywhere. All your variances, I'm sorry, are always signs. They're always, because everybody wants, there's signs on the, on the road and, and on the building. And when you don't have it on the building, who knows what's in that building? So, you know, the key, I believe all the time, is to make it proportional, and that's, that's really what it comes down to, your decision if you feel that it's proportional.
So how many stores are there altogether?
I'm looking at the pylon sign, and it looks like there is one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 12.
But if there were 12, if there were 24 and the structure was twice as large, would Dollar Tree make that, that their logo and the sign larger than the 130?
Well, if Dollar Tree took the entire property, I, I would agree that the ordinance should reflect, but it doesn't. It was still, if, if Dollar Tree took the entire shopping center?
No, no, no. If, if Dollar Tree was the same size as it is, but the rest of the shopping mall included twen, twice as many stores in terms of proportionality, would, would Dollar Tree be pushing, asking, sorry, for twice as large a sign to make it proportional?
No, because what we're doing is, we're really not looking at the overall length. If you see, the sign is centered over the door. All we're looking at is just this facade. If the store were to continue, or like you said, if there were more stores, no, we're only looking at this store, not the whole, not the whole center.
Going back to the building design, this, what we're calling the gable is the arch, right?
Yes.
And that's, that's the only one at that entire shopping center.
It's the only one.
If there was another one for another store?
I would ask.
From a sign perspective, would you say, they would have a, you wouldn't, would you change the size of this, or would you say they should have a similar size to you?
They would have a similar size.
Yes.
You know, if there was another gable on the other one. It's unusual that this whole, the way this shopping center is built, but this is called a sign band, and that's where the electricity is and things like that. But that limits for each one of those tenants.
And so for all of the other units, they only have that sign band?
They don't have that band.
They don't have the additional space.
Yep.
I think we interrupted the planner's testimony, and do we want to go back to him? Is the board of any questions for the original?
Yeah, that was what I was getting to before, to see if we were finished with the planner. So maybe we need to get him back and, and make sure that's. Any other questions for this witness? Okay, let's bring back your engineer planner. Now, I, I don't know that we're finished or not finished, but does anyone have other questions for this witness?
I have, I would like a clarification on the, the benefit. So the testimony, there was testimony about the distance from the roadway?
Right.
And the size of the sign?
Yes.
But the aerial that was shown by Chairman Thomas about, there's a lot of vegetation. Are you really able going, going to be able to see the sign if the vegetation is obscuring the view regardless of the size? When I look at some of these exhibits, this is the 4437 Lincoln Highway Packet, page two. I, I can't really see much of anything. I would rely on the monument sign, because I can't see that big, even a sign that size. So I'm just wondering, the justification is saying, well, it's safer because it's bigger and you need the size to see it from that distance from the highway. I don't see how you'd be able to see it with all the vegetation anyway, unless you're on the actual site.
If, if we were headed on north on 27, I would actually agree with you.
Okay.
Because of the wall of trees that's adjacent to the site. But we're not. We're, we're past that, we get past that wall, and we have trees and we have buildings, and as we're moving up the roadway, we're seeing glimpses of that sign. It's not blocked. When I say that it's obscured, you can still see it, and you're seeing it between, in between and among the vegetation. And that is one reason why you need to recognize what it is at a glance, at a very rapid glance. The marquee sign, you're going to try to read down through those signs to figure out what, what store you want to visit. In, in my opinion, my professional opinion, those signs do not contribute to motorist safety. I understand every, every, every retail center prefers to have them out there, basically because every tenant wants their name out there near the street so people can see it. If you were going 15, 20 miles an hour, you would be able to glance at most of those signs, but there's no way to read 12 signs when you're going 15 miles an hour. So you're going to get a glance at something you can't read. And if you can see the sign from a distance and you see that big gable wall, and you recognize that as an iconic appearance because you recognize that logo right away, that's, that's where the safety aspect comes in. The rest of it is the aesthetic, and those are two benefits, both of them. So even if you didn't buy the safety argument, the aesthetic and the balance of the, of the sign to the actual architecture of the building, proportionality to the shopping center is, is also in play as a benefit too, so.
And that's both a benefit under the ordinance and under the purposes of zoning that you testified to?
That's right.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? Any other witnesses? Just to follow procedure, I'll, as a token, open to the public that's not here, so assuming that no one, no one in that area, there's probably no, very few people within 200 feet to get a notice from anyway, so we'll close to the public. Anything you want to add?
No, I would just say in sum that, in terms of the ordinance, I think a lot of the questions about scale and visibility and the visuality of it, the, the testimony demonstrates that we're consistent with the ordinance, because what the ordinance really favors is that the signage be consistent with the overall design of the facade and the structure and the building and being scale. And as both Mr. Dixon and Mr. Kapata testified to, the shopping center design for this, which has been around for a very long time, has a single gable, a single space like this that has the opportunity for, you know, a, a larger sign than what could be on any other area of this shopping center. But it is appropriately scaled, there's negative space, I want to say dead space. As you said, you know, there's negative space above, below the lettering, it's balanced, it's in the center. So I think even though, of course, every ordinance has a standard of what, you know, a minimum or maximum size is, it is within the overall scale and design of what is contemplated for the signage within the ordinance.
Okay, board members, any comments, questions?
I, I have a question. It's more historical in nature than what is being presented here, but I've been around for a while, and I don't ever remember granting retrofitness a sign on this building. Did we do that?
I, I, I do have a recollection of that. I mean, it was a while ago, five, 10 years ago. But I, I do remember an application there. I, I'd have to look it up. I could, you know, I could email you the resolution if I find it, if you're interested.
Well, it'll be a little late for tonight, buddy.
What can I tell you?
So I'll just kind of like, I'll kind of roll with that. Okay, we'll just act like your recollection is better than mine.
I.
Any other comments, questions?
I, I do have one comment. I, I drive past the shopping center every night on my way home from work, so I'm traveling northbound. And I would agree with the testimony given, that pylon sign, it's hard to read. I make it a mission every day on my way home to try to identify one other tenant in the shopping center, and it's hard. So I just wanted to throw that there, that I do agree with that testimony.
Anybody else?
I'd just like to add, I think the channel letters, the fact that it's not one solid sign helps with it not looking crowded. I think it fits the space, and I think as far as doing it, I don't feel that it does detriment to the area, and you, it, if it enables you to see it, I, I think there's a balance there.
Entertain a motion if there's no other comment.
Yeah, I move that we grant Dollar Tree stores the necessary C variance, which will allow the applicant to install the sign as proposed and set forth in the application with both the words and the logo appearing directly above. In, in exactly the format that it appears in the, in the application.
We need a second?
A second.
Charo Vithia?
Yes.
Richard Prokanic?
Yes.
Gary Rosenthal?
Yes.
Robert Shepard?
Yes.
Basim Verdas?
Yes.
Basilek Anastasikos?
With reservations, yes.
Chairman Thomas?
Yes. Okay, one other item of quick business. The bylaws, I believe our attorney has some comments.
Just quickly, I obviously made changes based on our discussions a month ago. The only thing I wanted to point out is that I had included some additional language under 3.4-2, which is an automatic vacancy, and that's based on state law. And I think because it is state law, and I don't want to say that it's inconsistent, but it's not, it, it's not necessarily complimentary to 3:4-1. I'm just going to suggest that that not be included. Obviously, as I said, because it's state law, it does, it is applicable in the event it becomes necessary for the board of the township to, to apply it. But other than that, I think the changes, as we discussed, and if everybody's comfortable with them, I can prepare a resolution for this meeting where the board decide.
Are you saying that what's in red, we would, would not be included?
Just 3.4.
A, a 3.4 dash?
3:4-2 would be removed.
Oh, dash two.
Everything else was consistent with what we had previously spoken about.
Okay, take a look at it, and, and we'll deal with it at the next meeting with the resolution. If there's no other business, entertain a motion to close.
I move that we adjourn.
There's a second?
A second.
We won't even take a vote, we'll close.